Okay.
Well, I mean, we can do it.
Let's do it now, let's go ahead.
What ended up happening is I have met with John Sandler in the auditor's office and told him that I was going to go through the indictment, Mr. Barford. I went through the indictment and I noted seventeen paragraphs that dealt with council business or NRHA business or City Hall business, matters that raised questions for me. And in turn, to begin any discussion, he really needs to look through these processes, procedures. Many of these were in advance of the fraud hotline. That being said, I have a request of him to review the seventeen paragraphs and others, should he see fit, so that we can at least get a report back from him and begin any discussion amongst ourselves, at least to lay a framework, groundwork for it. And I have copies for everyone here to see which paragraphs I went through. As I said, whatever, he's more experienced in city business than I am, in the sense that he lives it every day. He can tell us what processes or procedures were missed or not missed. Some of it dealt with, in particular, relationships that he needed, that I asked if they were relationships or not, examining how things worked between council members at the time. We weren't here for the most of this. So it's asking him to investigate it. I have a copy for everybody to look through, and please feel free to add to it or comment to him as to what I'm asking him to do. And it'll take him some time to get through it, I know it will, but at least he can begin that process.
Yeah. I'd like a meeting to be scheduled with Dr. Boone, the South Side Educational Committee, and Ron Williams, and I'd like it to be held at the South Side Aquatic Center, so we can find out why we, the community, was thinking that one thing was going to occur with the new school, and it's not occurring. And so we just really need to, Dr. Boone, I'm sure it's going to be her schedule, but she needs to talk to this committee. Ron needs to say where we went wrong, you know, because, you know, you read the other day, they're saying that they're not going to be able to have the attendance, you know, that they wanted in terms of open seats. And so we just need to find out why, in ten weeks, you know, she's come here and found out something that we should have known all the time. And I'd like it to be scheduled as soon as possible. That's all I have.
I don't have anything other than, I really wanted to thank administration, especially James Rogers. They've really put the pedal to the metal on trying to clean out code and parking and garage, garbage cans and everything in my point, and the Old Dominion area, and I think they're doing a super job. They've hired some great people, and there's a lot of momentum there. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is regarding the memo that you sent us for employees, and I have, I have concerns that this, the way our compensation plan is laid out, it's not going to allow us to really retain or attract people who work for the city. I saw your memo, and I think that, number one, none of the employees should have been left out in the first place. Number two, I hear that there are some people who got increases, and now they're having to pay them back because we weren't supposed to give them because they didn't qualify or whatever, because they were over the ceiling in the first place, so they, I think it's, I think that's horrible, if we gave them a cost of living adjustment and now they're having to pay it back. And then the other thing that I've heard is that Human Resources is advising payroll clerks that they shouldn't tell people if they're nearing their ceiling, so that they don't know that if there is some stipulation in the compensation plan that would prevent them from getting a cost of living adjustment or prevent them from getting a bonus, that they won't know that they're going to ceiling out at some point. And so I think that our entire compensation plan needs to be looked at to make sure that a step is one thing, but to work somewhere for five years and the price of bread goes up and the price of gas goes up and your paycheck stays the same just because you hit this invisible ceiling, I think is wrong. And I think that we can't have people working for us that are in those kinds of situations and expect to retain them, because all that's going to do, I mean, we may have people who can't go anywhere for age or health or whatever the reason is, they're probably going to be coming to work disgruntled, and the ones who can go somewhere are going to go, and we're going to lose them. So we need to revamp that, and when you guys tell us that everybody's getting a raise, I would like for it to mean that everybody's getting a raise, not some of the people based on this qualification and that qualification like it's in a small bracket.
And Mad Vice Mayor, it's the first time I heard that anybody had to pay something back, so I'll, I'll double check that. I don't think that's the case. I will say for the fifty employees, which the memo, it's, I'm recommending next council meeting to come back with a 2 percent bonus for them.
And aren't bonuses taxed at a higher rate?
Well, I'm not sure how we.
No, it would be taxed at your tax bracket rate, and so that, no, the answer is no.
No, they're not. But they're not considered a part of their actual compensation, so for the purposes of, of retirement and social security, the bonuses don't count.
That I know that it don't count for retirement, and I'm not sure about social security.
Yeah. We need to make sure we're getting that right.
So for the fifty people, which now to my understanding is that they were so far above their range, so it's not that they bumped against the ceiling, they were significantly above the ceiling. So what we're doing is just making sure that everybody gets compensation increase as the council asks.
Even though they're above their range, Marcus, the price of gas still keeps going up. I mean, it's down now. It's down now. It's down now, but everything else goes, stuff goes up, and even though they may be significantly over their ceiling, that's not their fault. It doesn't negate the fact that everything around them still goes up, other than the price of gas. But it, we need to make sure that that's right, and then we also need to make sure that we're not screwing them on their retirement and their social security when we do these bonuses. That's all I have.
And we haven't taken any money back.
Okay, well, that's not the word on the City Hall streets, that they are going to have to pay it back, and, okay.
There's no one.
I'm going to hold you to that. Okay. That's all I have.
Dancing Statue of Liberties. So on my way to work this morning, I passed three different locations in which Liberty Tax had their dancing Statue of Liberty people out on the street corner spinning signs, and I want to know what code they're violating, because I'm over it. It makes, it's just grungy. They're, when cars are on corners, they're jamming the signs into the cars, like from the sidewalk or from the median, you know, like pointing them to it, it's got a, it's too much. And I think other people are over it as well. If we can't put flags and banners out, then Statue of, Dancing Statue of Liberty people shouldn't be allowed on corners doing that. And in addition to that, I would like for us to look into some kind of sign, sign committee or code enforcement committee that focuses on Little Creek Road, Virginia Beach Boulevard and Military Highway. The, I think it's getting out of hand with, I'm not talking about temporary signs, I'm talking about actual business signs.
We've got houses for cash.
Yeah, and what they're adding to their signs, banners, there's, I'm seeing more banners coming up, the Clancy's on, Go-Go Place on Little Creek Road has a new banner that's gigantic that says, "Open for Lunch." Now, they're appearing, I guess now because we have the other ordinance where they can't put them out on the street or flag, so now they're finding other ways, but we need to go after them, and I think also in areas like Military Highway and Little Creek Road, we need to possibly look at future budget with some creative things with convincing businesses to change their signs or conform to new standards or new codes. I think those areas of the city, particularly Virginia Beach Boulevard, Military Highway, Little Creek Road, they're very industrial looking. I, I'm tired of seeing used car, used tire places stacking up tires along the road. I think, to me, that's a code violation. We need to go out there and go after them. I don't know, it just, it's ugly, especially on Military Highway, which is a gateway for the airport in our community. When people are coming in, the first thing you see are just rows of used tires, signs that are inappropriate, dancing, you know, Statue of Liberties. It's just, it's, we've got to protect our city and make it look better, and those corridors just look ugly to me.
Yeah.
I agree. You know, it was a long time ago, probably ten years ago or so, but we actually had a group that just, we tried to sweep the city and pull down signs that were, you know, in violation of our code, and the number of signs that got pulled were, it was amazing. I think it was out on Military Highway and some on Granby Street, and, you know, we, we just made a push one month, and it was amazing how many signs you've got out there in violation of our statute of ordinance. Look, we have a, an R-17 ordinance tonight for a special exception for entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages. It's at the very end of Granby Street, and the Planning Commission has recommended denial by 7-0 vote. But I've talked to Tommy, and, and actually, the Captain of Naval Base called me today about his concerns about this, and so I think it'd be good if we had a presentation, if we could continue this for two weeks, let the Navy come in here and tell us what their issues are, and get all of us up to date on what JLU study was and what we agreed to. In his letter, he says, "We view development at this site as an encroachment upon operations on Naval Station Norfolk." I mean, they were pretty clear about what they thought, but, so we all ought to understand what it is we're going to vote on. And if it's okay, we're just going to continue it for two weeks, okay? So, and it's, Tommy agrees, it's in his ward, Barclay's not here, but.
Can we also find out what impact the Pretlem Library, because it's right there?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's right at the Pretlem Library.
Paul's exactly right.
This is about, well, let me say, there's something else about grandfathered buildings. I mean, there are a whole lot of things that could come out of there, including, I suppose, the.
You get the Knights of Columbus is right behind there.
I know, I know.
The Democratic Club moved into.
Okay, but if we're going to continue for two weeks, I want to make sure everybody understands, we'll put all those issues.
We'll give them that respect.
On, on the table, but I, but we have, in our plan Norfolk, and we have in these, in this adopted JLU study, certain commitments that we've made. And so we all understand what they are and what the Navy thinks is, you know, they've agreed to as well, before we do anything where it looks like we might embarrass ourselves or get pricked.
George, I talked to the mayor earlier too about, it's in an APZ-2, not an APZ-1, and according to the brochure that was handed out, it says that that's a conditional allowance for commercial or retail. It doesn't say that it's not in the blue part, which is banned, so I think there's some confusion too with the, the property owner, as well as the, you know, on why that says that and.
And what it's called too, it's not, it's an assembly hall, I think.
Right.
So I think that's a distinction between that and commercial hall. So we ought to find all that out. Let's all make sure we don't do it, that's all. Okay? Okay. That's it.
Did we notify the, coming down?
I just, I didn't know where we could lead either, I mean, I, okay. And then the Chartway, R-18, Chartway Credit Union is going to be, there's a request for two weeks continued, the chart. Okay, and we're going to, you know, we have this, this Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, which we call MEAC, and it's a pretty good group, and they've been meeting fairly regularly. And there is a group called HURUMFA, which has a retired naval admiral, Navy, Craig Quigley, as their, Craig Quigley, as their executive director, and they have a lobbyist in Washington who, the Roosevelt Group, they provide a lot of information to the region, and the MEAC guys thought it was a good idea to have Quigley on the board, and I think it's a good idea too, if it's okay with y'all, we'll just vote on that tonight, and to bring this, this executive director, letting him come in and share information with our Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. There are about a dozen guys sit on that thing. Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Ready for closed session?
Yes.
Move the members of council assembling closed meeting, February 9, 2016, at 5:28 PM, for the purpose set out in Section 2.2-3711 of the Freedom of Information Act that is discussion of the disposition of publicly owned real property in the downtown and Oakwood areas of the city. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiri?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
As, as well as give information related to his last presentation, and then later we have George Homewood and Adam Alita, who will give the council an update on the sand management plan. Ma'am, before I turn it back over to you and to the chief, I do want to introduce one individual to the council tonight, and that's Brent Kelly. Brent Kelly is our new chief marketing officer. As you will recall, back during the retreat, we talked about having an opportunity, not only to tell our story, but to make sure that the residents and the businesses of the city can thrive through this one consolidated communication effort, so we're very happy to have Brent with us today, so welcome aboard, Brent.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you guys, and just would say, I was here thirty years ago, going to school up the street in Williamsburg, and I've been come back here, you guys are doing an amazing job, and I'm so excited to be a part of it, and look forward to helping to continue your mission.
Already, your credentials are impeccable.
Well, good to have you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and boss. I'm glad to be back here this evening to.
Span a group.
I'm glad to be back here this evening to follow up on some of the things we talked about last time we met. I really want to hit a couple of the items towards the end of the presentation, that I thought we gave a little bit of, not a whole lot of time to, that I think are fairly So to get to, not that. This Fair and Partial Policing Work Group, we didn't get to talk a whole lot about that, but this is an extremely important piece of what we're trying to do on the Police Department. And to give full explanation of this is, we have pulled a group of citizen stakeholders in that have gone through our fair and impartial policing process with us to talk about our policies, to do a review of our policies and procedures, to see if there's citizen input that we can have that will help us build the Police Department with community involvement. So they are in the process right now, twice a month, in looking at all of our policies, to include our use of force policies, to talk about what we might do differently, to see if there are places where we can improve, to see where the community can have a say in what the Police Department is doing. I will tell you, I don't know that this is being done in a whole lot of places, so I think this is some exciting work for us in trying to get this accomplished and making sure that we have a Police Department that reflects our community values in a real way. So we're very excited about this, and we're looking forward to pushing on with this effort. It is a work in progress, we're still feeling our way through it, but we've made some, we've made some significant steps, and have developed a work plan to help address some of the issues that we found. On this slide here, we didn't even talk about cops and curls. That's a new initiative. We talked about LEC, we talked about CAKE, we talked about a lot of the things that we are already doing and continue to expand on. This is a new initiative that we've come up with. This, in this event, what we are going to do is bring young ladies in from our underserved communities between the ages of six and 12. We are going to pair them with police officers and have basically a safe and fun dance party, almost like a prom-type event for these young ladies to be able to attend to, that may not get a chance to do that on their own. So we're going to enable that, we have sought out partners for it, we have folks that are going to help us with this, there's going to be a lot of activities, selfie booths, different games to play, and we are really excited about this. We think this is going to turn out to be a very nice event for the young ladies. So we talked about the milestones, a couple of other things that I want to talk about in this. A lot of what we're doing with our community policing effort and reaching out to the community is to not only do what's right and do what we think is efficient and effective, but we're also taking a look at the President's 21st Century Policing Report. And a lot of what we're gearing towards is trying to look at implementation pathways for that report. As a matter of fact, we've handed that report to our captains, and they have been going through it, goal by goal, pillar by pillar, to look at the places where we can implement, places that may be a little bit more difficult, and a lot of what we're doing right now is trying to make sure that we fall within those guidelines that is in that, in that report. So a lot of what we're doing right now is geared towards that. A couple of the other things that I want to cover that I think are important, there's a lot of talk about active threat and active threat response, and certainly with what we've seen going on in overseas and in other places in the country, I think it's appropriate for us to talk about that. The entirety of the Norfolk Police Department has been trained in active threat. They are trained in the academy, we have been training active threats since 1999. It is something that we continue to do on a regular basis. We, as a result of what we've seen happen in overseas and happen in other parts of the country, we are getting ready to launch an extensive training effort where we're going to run every one of our officers through another cycle of refresher to make sure that we are up on that, to make sure that we are up on all the tactics and procedures to be able to respond. Fortunately, we've been able to purchase some equipment, we have patrol rifles deployed in the majority of our department that can be used in these. Patrol rifle is basically an M4 Carbie.
That's kept in the trunk.
It's kept in the trunk, so that we can be able to deploy those if we need to, based on these types of incidents. We also have some equipment that's available to our special operations team, basically an armored vehicle that we can use for officer rescue and citizen rescue to be able to get onto the scene. We've got a mobile command post that we can use to set up if we need to. And one of the things we need to be aware of is, when we're talking about response times for this, these events don't last very long, fortunately. A lot of times what happens is, because we rapidly deploy, and police departments have learned how to rapidly deploy to these events, what happens is, by the time we get on scene, it's either ended by police action, or it's ended by the suspect stopping or taking their own life. And that's what we've seen over and over again throughout the country in response to these things. So that's, you know, that, you know, we are preparing, we continue to repair, prepare. Right after Columbine, our department took on the issue of active threat, and that's something that we just, it's part of our DNA now, is the ability to respond to that, and all of our officers have that training as they go out on the street.
Well, one of the critiques, I think, of Sandy was the fact that the police who initially responded waited for the SWAT team to arrive, and that that, just the minutes that passed by during that time period. So what you're telling us is, is that our men are trained to go ahead and enter as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. We do not wait for the SWAT team. What we train our officers to do is, once they arrive on scene, they grab teams of two, three, or four, whatever gets there, and they go right to the threat. They make immediate entry and they go in to handle what's going on, because we know that's what needs to happen. We know that these events don't last very long, there's a tremendous amount of damage can be done while the shooter is active, so our job is to get in there and make sure that threat's done.
If, if, like what happened in California, where the shooter left the scene and went elsewhere, we have no air asset here. What policy do you have with regard to air asset, because you have so many other jurisdictions? And do you have an MOU with other jurisdictions such as Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, if you have a prolonged scenario where they've left the vicinity, they've gone elsewhere? So it's air asset and MOU, can you answer that?
We have a very robust way to respond to these things, and we do have MOUs with every jurisdiction between here and Williamsburg. So we have the ability to call in assets that we need, to include the air assets that Virginia Beach has right now, to be able to help us. We also have the ability to call on our federal partners, almost certainly, when we roll out the, these things, we roll out with everything. We roll out with our officers, our special operations team, our bomb squad. Our bomb squad has reach-back ability to the local FBI office, we will get Special Agent Bomb Tech to come with us to be able to respond to that, if there were any threat at all of an IED improvised explosive device. We have the ability to call on our state partners from the state police, and we have worked together enough now, and we have a good enough working relationship, that I don't envision any problems with getting folks on scene. Through an urban area security initiative grant, we were able to purchase a radio system called Orion, which is a regional interoperable network, so that we can turn all of our radios to an interoperable channel and be able to talk across departments, so we can establish communications.
Do you have to make, I'm sorry, did you make a request for the feds to come onboard Homeland Security or FBI, or are they, when they hear what's going on in Norfolk, do they make a response themselves?
If they hear, they will make a response. However, I will say, before they hear, we would be on the phone with them.
Excellent.
To be able to get them in, to let them know what's happening.
And at what level of command is that required at your, within your department? Is that captain level, is that lieutenant level, what level does that have to come basically to your office, the chief's office?
Normally, the protocol is that I would call and make the official request, but I can tell you the way it works is, we have close enough working relationships with everybody that our officers and supervisors have cell phone numbers of everybody they need. For example, our special agent, the sergeant that's in charge of our bomb squad, has the FBI SABTs on his speed dial.
What's that?
Special Agent Bomb Tech. So while they're en route, they're going to be on the phone with one another saying, "Hey, we're going to need you," and those guys are already rolling. By the time I get through with the official protocol saying, "Hey, calling John Adams, the special agent in charge of the FBI office, to say, 'We need some of your assets.'"
How about if you were to need Virginia Beach, that is it easy to get Virginia Beach on?
Absolutely. Jim Servarek and I talk on a regular basis, and we talk via cell phone all the time. The seven cities chiefs have a once-a-month meeting to talk about issues of mutual concern. I don't envision any issue at all with being able to get what we need in Norfolk. They respond very quickly.
Thank you.
Chief, how is the connection with what you do in partnership with the universities?
We work very well with the universities. As a matter of fact, we provide some training to them as well. We don't leave them out of anything. We want to make sure that we're working hand and glove, because, quite frankly, we know that these things tend to happen where we have students, where we have soft targets, and we want to make sure that they understand how we're going to respond and that we can co-respond together. So we do involve them in our training and involve them in what we do.
Have you gotten any pushback from any of the universities?
None whatsoever. We have been working very well with them.
First, I want to say, I like ending this question just because it helps to, it helps for us to understand, as well as the public to understand, the working relationship that you have with all of the different jurisdictions, and that sometimes we do get bogged down in others, this is ours, this is theirs, there's that kind of territorial landmarking thing with localities, but it's very nice to know and very comforting to know that when our police officers need help for our residents, that other localities are there without giving it a second thought and vice versa. So I'm glad that you were able to explain that, not only for the council, but also for those who are watching. The second thing I wanted to say was, you did a press conference that asked for help in solving unsolved murders, and the first thing is, can you tell us what you've gotten from that, number one? And then, number two, my suggestion is going to be to you and the manager, is that perhaps we have you do something filmed that we run on 48, and we upload on YouTube, and that we talk to, so then Laurie's involved in this, we talk to various radio stations and TV stations as a public service announcement, which won't cost us anything, to ask, to continue to ask for the public's help and letting people know that we can't do this by ourselves and that we need their, not just the 1-888-lock-you-up thing at the news time, but randomly to ask people to help us, and then maybe push it, pull it back, so it doesn't just start to fall on deaf ears, and then bring it back again. then bring it back again. But those public service announcements that you can take, and you can also go on and let people know through your tips, we've been able, excuse me, to apprehend X, Y, and Z. So, your eyes and ears matter. And that way, you know, we can get people more comfortable with helping the police in all the things that you do and letting them know, you know, that what they have to say is helpful. So, what have we got? And, you know, we can do some other stuff.
Unfortunately, we are still having an issue with the no snitch culture that we run into in some areas. But it is not something that we are going to give up on. We are going to continue to attack that in order to get people to understand that if you're going to stay quiet, that means that you are tacitly approving of the behavior that's taking place. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, we don't solve any case without citizen involvement, without the community involvement. As I'm sure the attorneys on council will tell you, the physical evidence that recover has to be bolstered and corroborated by testimony. So, it is important that people are willing to come forward and talk to us about that. Now, we have a project right now that we are working with our local pastors, that they have reached out to us and we are going to work with them on something that I hope is going to be announced soon about involving the churches in this, to make sure that we are trying to attack this on all fronts to get past this. I refuse to believe that we are going to get to a point that we're just going to give up and allow people to not talk to us. That, that's not going to happen. We're going to continue to attack it and we will certainly take your suggestion, Vice Mayor, and, and look to get that accomplished.
Because we can, I mean, we can film it here. We have the ability to do it here and, and, you know, and that doesn't cost anything. And then putting it out, you know, uploading it to YouTube, that costs anything. So, PSA's and stuff, so.
Absolutely.
And I think that that's really good because when you, your officer was on television and she just put it out there to the public, the reason and the rationale behind you not being able to have as much evidence concerning the young man from Hampton University. And I was just cheering for you because you just put it out there to the public. This is real life. This is what we're up against. It's, it's not solely our responsibility, but we really need your help. And I want you to continue to put it out there to the citizens of Norfolk to let them know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're, we're up against and we really need your help. So, in requesting the report for all the wards, I found that, and my request was to compare how many murders were committed in 2015 by ward, first of all. The second part to it was how many resolved murders that we had solved from every ward. But at that point, where do we go from, from here? So, the continuing, the updates of the unsolved murders and how the citizens can continue to help you to get some information to let them know it's just not left. If, if Ward Three had 10 murders, okay, and you solved five of them, what about the other five? Where are we now? And what are our, what are our future plans as far as these unsolved murders? So, continuous update, updates to the citizen lets them know that they're involved as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I really appreciate, just give it to them.
We will do that.
Honestly.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
In regards to collaboration with other departments, maybe five or six years ago, we were considering precinct on the South Side. What I'd like to know, you might not have the data on that, if statistics warrant trying to collaborate with Chesapeake to build a precinct to take care of the, you know, Berkeley Avenue extended area, you know, into South Norfolk and into, you know, certain parts of the South Side.
That's a good segue into the next thing I'd like to talk about, Mr. Riddick. And right now, we have contracted with the International Association of Chiefs of Police to do a staffing study, a complete staffing study of the Norfolk Police Department. Staffing is always a concern. We want to make sure that we have some science behind the decisions we make in reference to not only numbers of police officers, but where do we deploy them? And what shift schedules do we put them on? And are we making the most efficient use of the manpower that we have available to us? So, IACP has collected a ton of data from us. They've looked at all of our computer aided dispatch files. They have done interviews with the officers. They've done interviews with every member of the command staff. We even had the city manager at our kickoff meeting for the, for their site visit to us to make sure that we have all the variables in there that we wanted to have in there. And certainly, once that study is done, I think it's going to answer a lot of questions for us. And part of that may be that we change some of our configuration to take care of where we have our, our high crime areas, or we change some of our deployments to take with that. But certainly, we have nothing against working with Chesapeake in those areas where we border one another and we have the mutual aid in place. So, that's something that I'm more than willing to talk to Calvin Wright about, to see if we, if we're delivering services in the most efficient and safe manner to the residents that live on the South Side.
Thank you. Well, one of the issues I had asked you to look into is where, where are we vis a the other cities of our size?
That's a tough question, sir, to answer. And the reason being is Norfolk is so uniquely situated because we have the naval base. We have the port with us. So, there are some things that, that don't allow us to be compared as readily as I would like, but that's why we brought the IACP in, because what they're going to do is take a look at the data, the data from our city and use that data to help guide us in where we need to be.
When do you expect response?
They have told us, now that they have finished the, the interviews, what they've told us based on, on what we wrote in the contract, 90 days. So, we should get a report of some form in 90 days that we can sit down with the IACP and talk about.
You would be able to tell us that if we need to hire 100 more police officers, you're willing to come in, come here and do that even though your boss is sitting at this table?
Yes, sir.
We'd do it together.
One thing I know about the city manager is it's all about the data. And if the data says what it is, then the data says what it is.
Okay. We're going to hold you to that one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's go to the next one.
We had talked, I know there had been some concern about pursuits. So, we'll talk about pursuits on a couple of different levels. One, as a result of study that we did ourselves and as a result of going through the Kalia process, we took a look at our own pursuits first. And based on that look and based on what we saw.
What was the process called?
I'm sorry, the Council for Accreditation on Law Enforcement Agencies. That's the national accreditation that we are going for, for our police department. Based on going through that process, it, it's become apparent to us that we need to make some changes in our pursuit policy and we are going through that right now. Now, before I talk anymore about it, I'd like to be able to socialize this with my police officers before we make some sort of announcement. I've got the draft on my desk now. I'm going to go through that this week and then we'll talk about where we go from there. But I think it's safe to say we're going to have a more restrictive policy.
Well, will that entail, I mean, one of the discussions I had asked you to look into was the fact that you have somebody who's in Chesapeake, he leaves Chesapeake, comes in to Norfolk and the initial stop in Chesapeake was a traffic stop that ultimately was the person didn't have a driver's license. Person flees on that, not a felon, it's a traffic stop. Vehicle ends up in Norfolk Military Highway injuring people on military highway in our city. So, I guess, let me back up and say, when do you hear about the pursuit in Chesapeake before it enters Norfolk?
Well, we're notified by radio fairly soon, once the officers are involved in the pursuit and the outside jurisdiction realize they're going to come into another jurisdiction. So, they're notifying their emergency operations center that they've got a pursuit, this is going to go out of city. That emergency operations center calls ours and then we're notified on the street that , hey, it's coming in.
All right. When that pursuit's coming in, if the question, let me just add this now. If the pursuit is, we were going to perform a traffic stop because his brake light didn't work and he took off versus we're in pursuit of a bank robber, do we have the right to say, you're not going to enter our, our city or you're going to have to cut your pursuit off?
Unfortunately, under state code, we do not. State code allows for any police agency in the Commonwealth, once they begin a pursuit, they are allowed to continue that pursuit within any, any place in the Commonwealth.
Regardless of what it is?
Regardless of what it is.
Because that's, that is an exigent circumstance and they can follow it.
So, they can, there's no ability for us to tell Chesapeake that they have to stop a pursuit just because they've gotten to the Norfolk border.
Do we join that pursuit?
No. Generally, what we do is we will monitor it, but we don't engage in it. Now, that, that, that is on a case by case basis depending on what they've got going on. You know, if this is somebody who's committed some heinous crime and we can assist, then we may get involved with it. But if it is just for a traffic stop or we don't know why they're pursuing, we do not get involved in that pursuit. That is Chesapeake's from start to finish. We do our best to monitor it. If there are things that we can do to try to mitigate that, we can, but generally, these things develop so quickly, it's kind of tough for us to get in there and, and do anything of substance.
Well, when you meet with the police chiefs, I think a discussion really has to be made. We can have our policy, as you said, and you're going to come back to us at that. But I think that one of the issues I think that needs to be discussed, Mike, is really the fact that you all need to have a uniform policy. I mean, we really are a region, our borders cross, you can't tell you're in one city or, or in the next. So, it really has to be a uniform policy we need to come up with. And frankly, if you have spikes and you can deploy your spikes, I see no reason why when you know somebody's coming in from Chesapeake that we don't deploy spikes to stop the vehicle. I, I don't know why. So, I think, when you're examining that, please, and the reason is I see this all the time, is it could be a chase from Portsmouth into Norfolk and of course, inevitably, the person wrecks. And it could be, and it could be a drug distribution case or it could be, as I said, somebody who doesn't have a license or somebody who drives on habitual that hasn't paid his fines and costs. Some of them can be extremely minor and not life threatening. So, I really do believe that chase in our seven cities really needs to be examined on a more of a uniform regional policy.
I will be more than happy to bring this up again to the seven cities chiefs. We attempted this, I want to say before I was appointed chief.
Well, that was before Lightbridge.
Right. Before all of that, yeah. So.
We're regional now.
That's it. But I'll be happy to bring it up again. The problem we ran into is because each city's developed their own policy. There is a wide range that people pursue for. Some cities are very restrictive, some are medium, some chase for anything. So, that's, that, what we've got to do as chiefs is sit down and figure out how we want to do this.
And see, my problem is the cities that chase for anything and they end up in the city of Norfolk causing accidents, that's the problem that I have with that. So, I really think there has to be a uniform policy. Maybe state police can step in, examine state police's policy. I know that they do a lot of their traffic, most of those are traffic stops anyhow.
Sure.
But I think we need to look at that. I mean, it's just my request just because I see it. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
And I think that also concerns me the fact that another locality might have a more relaxed chase pursuit. Now, I was always under the impression that, you know, once they get within two miles or a mile of our city, that we had to, you know, take over or they would stop. That's not the case.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess my point is, is that, that we need to reaffirm, you know, with these different localities. I've been talking about pursuits since 93 when two girls were killed making that turn on City Hall Avenue just for driving a car. They were, you know, that, that weren't there and we chased them and they couldn't make that turn.
Yes, sir.
And since then, I'm sure we, my calculation, we had at least 10 deaths in Norfolk. In addition to those two girls, because of these high speed, we've had two people, one man had served in Vietnam and survived, he was killed on Zaygar Road when Galaz came back from Iraq, killed on military highway. One woman leaving the airport from a business trip, killed on military highway and, 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 what is it, Norview Avenue. So, regardless of what the state says and these other localities have their authority, I think we need to step in and say, listen, we need to, you know, take over. We need to take control of this because fortunately, we haven't had a death recently, but it's going to happen for something as simple as, as Eddie said, a busted taillight, suspended driver's license or anything like that. And so, we just really need to be sensitive to that. Like I say, I've been talking about it since 1993.
And the issue really isn't, isn't, you know, the hot pursuit is one issue and where you, you break the hot pursuit off, at what speed do you break it off? But it's really what initiates, as Mr. Riddick said, what initiates, you know, that hot pursuit. And that really, and I understand the state law behind that, but it's really the initiating, you know? If they don't have anything more than, than the broken taillight or that the inspection sticker is fraudulent, then I've got issues with hot pursuit in this city.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. We had other things. Do you have others, Wishing? Your minority recruiting?
Yes.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'd like, we keep on putting off the sand management.
Can we bring him back another time?
Sure.
I, I know that we, we sent questions to him in advance, but.
Do you mind coming back, Mike?
I didn't see the question.
My time is your time.
Well, I appreciate everything you did to that.
Yes, sir.
You're great.
Let me just ask one question before you leave, Chief, just a quick one. Recently, the, the young lady who started Black Lives Matters at Old Dominion University, we have anybody there?
You know, I'll have to check, Mr. Riddick. I'm not sure whether we do.
I was, I was told by another jurisdiction that we didn't have anybody there. And, but you know, check on it because that's an insult. I mean, it's more than a phrase.
Right.
And for us to be in an urban city like we are, it's an insult.
Yes, sir.
The question too would also be, Mr. Riddick, did they send the invitation?
They didn't even send the invitation. It's, it's all, it's all, Old Dominion always has their events planned.
But they send stuff out too.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, President of Council. And lastly, we'll have George and Adam to give us an update on the sand management.
Take over your job there, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we're thrilled to be able to talk to you about this, this process. As I think many of you know, about 18 months ago, a number of residents of Cottage Line, East Ocean View had a desire to, to try to remove some of the sand that had been encroaching on the, their residential structures. And the process ended up almost pitting the city against some of its residents and we decided that that was just not a good thing. And so, I came to you and promised a reset and we began a process to develop a sand management plan so that the citizens in the city could work cooperatively to find solutions to the, the sand encroachment problem. I need to point out Tom McNeilan, who served as the co-chair of the, the committee to develop the, the plan along with Thelma Drake. And I would really be remiss if I stood up here any longer and didn't let the spotlight shine on, on Adam Malita. Adam has been, has done yeoman work. He has really been the heart and soul behind getting this plan put together from the staff perspective. And so, Adam, wherever you are, will you take it up?
Thank you, George. I have been able to, after sitting for about a year of listening to the, the science and the observations of the neighbors in Cottage Line who saw what was going on with sand encroachment and sand movement in the Ocean View area, I started to learn about some of the deficiencies with our current process of dealing with beach issues. The current process we have now is essentially to submit ourselves to the, the State Dune Act and to apply on a case by case basis for permits to do work that impacts sand or impacts dunes within the jurisdiction of the primary coastal sand dunes. That process is necessarily reactive and it's piecemeal. It deals with problems on a case by case basis if and when a citizen comes for, or the city comes forward and seeks an application under the auspices of the VMRC, the Virginia Marine Resources Commission. So, who's in charge of the slides? Am I? Okay. Thank you. So, now that the sand and dune advisory committee work is complete, we have been able to synthesize what they have observed and what they have proposed as solutions going forward of a, of a more consistent and, and fairer approach to managing sand up and down the entire Ocean View corridor from, from the Little Creek jetty all the way to the end of Willoughby The essential thrust of this plan is to, in terms... The essential thrust of this plan is to internalize within the city of Norfolk all of the analysis and activities that we believe would be necessary to address impacts on our dune and sand system. So, it replaces that piecemeal approach I talked about under the permit process with a plan that is comprehensive and puts essentially citizens and the city in charge of the process instead of the State Dune Act permit process. It has features that are active elements that talk about when and how you can do sand replenishment and how you repair breaches in the dune, how you deal with accretion of sand, especially in the Cottage Line area where the sand has accumulated and the dunes have grown. And it has passive elements. It sets up procedures for monitoring from year to year what is going on with sand, how sand is moving, what of our procedures are working and which aren't, and gives us an opportunity to revise those on a rolling basis. The principal agent of that monitoring process would be a new review board. It is an advisory board. We've tentatively called it the Coastal Management and Review Board. But what it is, is it consists of citizen representatives, science representatives, political representatives. Similar to the makeup of the advisory committee, we have folks from Army Corps and VIMS, the Virginia Institute of Marine Science and VMRC. The proposal would be, and this is captured in the plan, the proposal would be that this board would meet at least twice a year, review projects, review science, LiDAR data and other metrics of how those projects are working. And so, we have real-time feedback from both people who live there and people who are expert in these sorts of coastal engineering issues to understand what's working and what's not for our management plan. Necessarily, because we are internalizing this process, it does contemplate that we would step back from using the State Dune Protection Act approach to dune management. So, right now, as you all are aware, we have tasked our wetlands board with the process of also managing the State Dune Act. This plan would essentially automate many of our processes internally and so we would not be using the wetlands board for any of those procedures that the city is undertaking. We will still be using the Dune Act in areas where the city cannot do the work or where it's private property, but everywhere where we are able to do the work and everywhere where we have public property, we contemplate that we will do all of that under the plan and will no longer need to have the wetlands board serving as an arm of VMRC for the city. This plan also seeks to address many, if not all, of the concerns that were expressed by citizens in the lawsuit that the city has filed in order to quiet title to those portions of the beach where title is outstanding in the names of unknown persons, defunct corporations, or heirs of heirs of heirs of original developers of the Ocean View area who are long since deceased. This is the lawsuit that the city commenced in direct response to the request of the Army Corps of Engineers to quiet title. Before they put all of that sand and all of that money from the sandy renourishment project allocation onto our beach, they want to make sure that that sand is going on public property for public benefit. And so, they need us to assist with quieting title and ensuring that we have clear title to everywhere that that federal sand is being deposited. This leads me to a quick update of where we are with the berm and renourishment project. Ron isn't here and probably has more details of this, but I think you got a brief memo from the manager updating you on the bid process and the low bid that did fall within the Army Corps' parameters for accepting. And so, we do have an accepted bid and we had to increase our share, but this is still within our ability to do the project. And so, it looks like we are clear to proceed with the project. We're a little bit later in time than planned, but we are still on course to do the nourishment and that does require us to clear the title.
Marcus, just for the public's knowledge, why there was an increase, can you explain that? Or do you want me to do it?
Well, we did go up for the bid and at first, we thought it was just a supply and demand issue, but then after that, when we went out with the bids the second time, the rate was established. So, that's what we.
There's only eight companies across the country that do sand replenishment and most of them are in New Jersey, I believe. And so, it's very hard to get companies to come in and do sand replenishment projects. And Chris Christie got all this money.
So, one of the principal concerns that the citizens had as all of this new sand is being placed along the beach is where is this sand going to go? Citizens in Cottage Line were especially concerned to understand whether that was going to result in further accumulation, particularly in their area. And so, that made it all the more critical to make sure that we have this plan done and that we have those sort of feedback measures and monitoring measures in place. So, if we do this in the manner that we contemplate, we will have the sand management in place, we'll have the management board stood up, and we'll be able to track what is going on with the new sand when it starts to arrive as part of the nourishment project. This ties in with some of our resiliency planning. We will be able to set up a coastal management unit within Public Works that will be specifically tasked with not only dealing with the renourishment issues, but then monitoring and staffing the board, coming up with projects where we are going to do adjustments to the beach, repair of breaches. If we do replacements of overwalks, where will we do them? When will we do them? And all of that work to start to implement the elements of the plan that will give us a resilient and a comprehensive approach to managing and protecting our shoreline. So, the next steps we will have for you is, we don't have it on your agenda tonight, but we will have on your agenda a resolution to initiate the comprehensive plan amendment. That will result in public hearings and planning commission review of the plan. You have a draft of the plan in your drop box and you can be looking at that while citizens are looking at it and while we start that public process. But as that process moves forward and we come to you, we come back to you with the planning commission's recommendation and the final inclusion of the plan into Plan Norfolk, we will have the other adjustments to stand up the committee and start the process of monitoring and implementing the plan and identifying projects where we can improve some of the conditions in dunes that need to be addressed first. Any questions?
The Cottage Line Civic Week board members asked me, again, I know, Marcus, I brought this up in our meeting, that there may be some money that is collected from the wetlands board when they issue fines to those who violate it. And they had asked about using some of those funds to do some test projects down in the Cottage Line section where you would actually remove sand that has been built up and transported to some other part that needs it and to see how fast it builds up and some other test projects that they want to do. But I know there was, we don't know where that, I think that money might just go into the general fund or it may go into a legal account, I don't know. But they had asked, if not that funding, could we look at some test projects in which, you know, I know they didn't get that out of all of the sand management, they still want you guys to move sand away from them, but just a test project with that. And there may be some other test projects they're looking at as well. But thank you.
Thanks, Adam. My guest is Sabrina. It's going to take care of the fund.
It's general fund.
Mayor, members of council, I did, so George did, George did mention Adam and thank you so much, Adam and George, and Ron Williams is not here tonight, but Ron played a big role. But also, I want to thank Bernard because we were spinning our wheels a little bit and I think Bernard really got the ball rolling, so I very appreciate it for, this is a good outcome.
Okay. All right, we got a couple of minutes, do we start? So, you got something else?
No, not enough.
No, this is okay.
We're very close, man.
Everybody.
Mike, give the answer, five more of Andy's questions.
Wait, is the TV still on?
Five minutes.
Okay, there it is. Okay. Mr. Riddick. All right, we'll stand with you. Okay, we'll move on upstairs.